Okay, um, I think we are all set to go. Andy, are you on?
Rob, I am on.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, in that case, I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Uh, at 6:02 PM and as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later. Um, on our YouTube page, sorry, forgot my cameras on. You guys get to see all the shine, okay? Uh, we're going to begin with the pledge allegiance, please, as a reminder to mute yourself, your microphone or your phone. As we say the pledge, you can also mute your camera. Um, I'm going to stand up in my spot here and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all. Particularly important, I think, thing to do, especially in light of this past week. All right, so quick, uh, thing, uh, quick items to go first, Marie, can you do the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter. Trustee Marpy.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Pine.
I'm here.
Okay, and Attorney Angle.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
All present.
Also present Attorney Angle.
Yes, I'm here.
We have a bunch from the village here as well, thank you. Um, and we, do we get, do we hear from Kevin? Kevin's here, right? I do see him on there, okay. Okay, just a quick review of online etiquette, um. Remember when not speaking to mute your microphone, some of the settings, um, set it so you can have it muted and just hit space bar uh, to speak. Uh, you're encouraged to use headphones, ideally headphones with a microphone built in, so there's no feedback loop created. Uh, if two of you are watching the meeting in the same room, um, God bless you, by the way. Uh, make sure to only have one person's audio on. Alright, so the first presentation we have is from Robert Flores of Delaware Engineering. Uh, we actually, um, are working with Robert, uh, and Delaware Engineering on a grant for the wastewater treatment plants. He's going to talk to us, the board about the CDBG grants that uh, were supposed to have opened up in the summer, I think the normal schedule is July and then they or they're due in July and they're awarded in December, but COVID messed everything up, so this is a delay. Anyway, I'm going to let him, uh, explain all this, Robert, please take it away and, uh, explain a little bit too about what we are looking to use this for.
Sure, um, so one of your critical infrastructure pieces is your water storage tank, which kind of makes sense, right? And the Rogers Avenue's tank is an older tank, uh, concrete. You've had several attempts in the past to repair it. Um, the last one cost you over a hundred thousand dollars in a tank, um, you know, it's more cracks and more leaks. Um, so we've been looking for ways to afford to replace the tank. And this, uh, CDBG grant opportunity is a good one. It's a million dollar grant and there's no match to it, or, you know, maxes out at a hundred, at a million. If the project cost is above a million, that, that would be the village's responsibility. And this was, um, like, um, Rob was saying a minute ago, CBG didn't have a round, an application round last year. So we believe this is basically money that was not spent last year and they're, they want to get it out the door quick. So it was a quick timeframe, they announced it, uh, last week and it's due March 5th. So got a small window to apply, which, you know, all these grants are competitive, so I guess those that move quickly are, you know, get the head of the line on this. Um, so what we're looking to do is in order to make a complete application, you have to uh, make a notice that you're going to have a public hearing. And so that's, those are the steps that you want to take today is, uh, um, authorize making the publication to have a hearing and there's enough time so that your regular February board meeting would be your public hearing. And then, you know, we take the steps that are needed to document the public hearing, we present in more detail the project, which is replace the tank and the things to go with it. You know, there's, there's booster pumps, there's piping. Uh, there's concerns about what do you, how do you replace it and keep that, keep it working on at the same time? All that kind of thing gets discussed at the public hearing, we get public input documented. Uh, and that all goes towards a completed application that gets submitted. Um, there'll be an engineer report to get submitted along with the documentation of the public hearing. See any, any questions up to that point, I guess?
I did want to say, we have Jim and Josh on the line and actually, uh, Robert, I think as a, in a previous, uh, engineering firm, was the one who designed our current sewer or wastewater treatment plant, is that correct?
That's right.
So Robert is very familiar with, uh, wastewater and water, here's the village, um, Josh or Jim, is there anything you want to add? All right, trustees, any questions?
So you can apply for up to a million, how much is it going to cost to replace the tank? Did you, I don't think you said that.
You're right, so there's, there's different alternatives to the cost of the tank, but, uh, just the tank itself, you know, purchasing the tank from the manufacturer uh, is somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. And then we have to decide, um, you know, what to do with the booster pump station, because there's, there's some properties higher up than, than the elevation and the tank that need the pressure. And then there's piping to make it work, just abandoning the tank. Um, we'll get close, if not go over the million dollars by the time the project's done. I was telling Rob earlier that there's two projects similar size, your, your tank is three hundred fifty thousand gallons. And, um, I've done a couple recently, one for the Village of Red Oak, one for the Town of Cairo. And the tanks are similar size, three hundred sixty thousand gallons, three hundred eighty thousand gallons. And those, those costs, one came in at seven hundred fifty thousand, one came in at nine hundred thousand. Um, but you know, every, every site's a little different. And we have to carry some contingency and whatnot.
Do those costs include, um, you know, engineering costs, design, bidding, all that stuff?
Um, it does, there's, um, there's additional things to consider is that since the grant is up to a million. Um, and we do have other needs in the village, you know, besides the water tank. Uh, you could design and bid as a bid alternate, additional improvements, water improvements. Say, replace a water main that's, you know, asbestos water main or something else. Um, with the goal being that you would maximize the, the full amount of the grant.
Are you talking in terms of, um, designing a project for, for a higher number to get more likely to get the full one million? Or are you talking about going for a second round of this to make the project larger?
Um, well, uh, designing it the first time with like a bid, base bid and a bid alternate. Um, so that you can maximize the, you know, and maximize this round, right? Uh, but we expect it will be a, a round in the summer, which is the normal timeline. That, uh, obviously you would apply for also. There's no reason not to apply to every, every round, right?
Robert, um, I've been talking to the state about a problem that the village has with, uh, handicap warning systems that the state put in back, uh, fifteen years ago. And all these warning systems now are all, uh, falling apart and broken and eroding and I asked the state whether there's any mo- money out there to replace them. And, uh, they sent me to the Capitol District Transportation Board, maybe. So maybe you can get on the list for future money, would the CBGB money be a better avenue rather than going that avenue?
Um, did, in your investigations, do you have like an order of magnitude cost?
Um, no, they, they just, the state told me that, uh, replacing with cast iron warning system would be hours a square foot. And we have quite a few of the warning systems that are, have been, uh, are crumbling and are just washed away.
Yeah, well, we can, we can, we can, yeah, we can look at that, because C-B-G, the way it works for the village, it's any village-wide improvements. Um, and it is, uh, you know, it can be used for water, it could be used for sewer, it'd be used for ADA improvements. So, you know, putting in the ADA crosswalks, uh, with a water tank project is not necessarily conflicting, you know? So, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I would just hate to see that we just dump blacktop on top of these and make it, uh, a worse look for our village. I mean, it looked really great fifteen years ago and, uh, unfortunately, they didn't use cast iron, they used a new product which didn't work out too well. And, uh, most of them are already broken up and causing hazards on our, on our streets.
Right.
Sidewalks.
Well, we're going to, we're going to investigate whether that would be part of this grant or if we want to aim towards the summer round.
You know, either way, it's something we need to look at in the future.
Trustees, any other questions?
So I have a obvious question, where is the water tank on Rogers Ave other than at the top?
Um, near the top on the right side.
It's across that cross street, I can't, I can't.
It'll be Ashley Drive.
Ashley, thanks, Josh.
Yep.
Neither my wife nor I knew, I'm looking at a Google map, just trying to find it, I didn't, I didn't know there was a water tank there. Um, I do like the idea of having a bid alternate, so if, in case we don't spend all the money, there is an option to just continue on spending, might as well spend up to the grand amount, but it sounds like we won't have a problem spending a million dollars on replacing the tank.
And we, if, if I can interject, we do have a couple short, um, water lines that are asbestos in the village. And I know that Rensselaer County and the New York State Department of Health kind of proud upon that. So that's, uh, that would be a way that I would try to pursue to at least get up to the million.
Right, and I, there's, I think, uh, there's three distinct spots that have asbestos in pipe.
I, 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 I just, that's probably something we have to do, whether we get it with this money or somewhere else, right? And eventually, it's the right thing to do.
Correct.
So, yeah, we can put it, at least then we'll have it defined, and probably, it'll put us on record as needing to do it, that's a good thing.
Right.
Any other questions, trustees or attorneys? So later in the meeting, we have, um, a resolution. Uh, we have two things, we have a motion authorizing, uh, me to execute, uh, execute professional services agreement with Delaware Engineering, uh, that would not exceed two thousand dollars and it would be getting us through to the application, getting the application submitted. Uh, and also assuming this is the avenue we want to go, um, we would, uh, also, um, need to approve the resolution that would set a public hearing for next month, um, as part of the requirements for the CDBG application process. Does this sound like, uh, trustees, it sounds, sound good with you?
Yes.
And Andy, can we just jump to that part of the meeting right now and, uh, go, go through those?
You can, you run the meeting, so you can organize your agenda.
All right, I like, I like the way you, uh, you said that, um, alright, um, let me get the resolutions up here. Uh, that was a cool sound. Alright, let me do the professional, uh, services, uh, agreement first. So this is the professional services agreement, uh, hopefully that I am now showing on the screen if I did it right. Uh, with Delaware Engineering trustees, you have seen this, uh, and this is the explanation on what it entails. And the not to exceed two thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, assuming trustees, you are good with this, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement with Delaware Engineering.
Uh, before, before you do that, if we can just confirm, did you have a chance to look at the prior services agreement with Delaware Engineering on their standard terms and conditions? And was anything changed or modified?
Um, I looked briefly, I don't recall, I didn't recall, I didn't find anything, but I, that doesn't mean we didn't, uh, go back and, and ask for a change on something.
Robert, do you have any recollection on your earlier services agreement, was anything amended or changed in the standard terms and conditions between Delaware and the village?
I don't remember, and, uh, what I sent was what I, uh, what are the terms and conditions of our previous one? Okay. But nothing rings a bell.
Right. I would think just subject to check, uh, the motion should be, if, if to authorize the execution of this, that the standard terms and conditions be made consistent with the existing services agreement between Delaware Engineering and, and the village.
Alright, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion, what, just what Andy said.
Well, the way all motions are made, just what Andy said, I need a second.
A second.
I don't know if I want to give that to Craig or Emily, uh, whichever, Marie is fine. Uh, alright, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, thumbs up and I, please, I?
I.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, hearing none, that is passed unanimously, let me also share the resolution. Um, do you guys see the resolution right now?
Yes.
Ah, perfect, uh, so this is a resolution, a public hearing on the intent to apply for community development block grant funding in the public infrastructure category. I'm going to skip down, um, pass some of the whereas as it described the, um, community development block grants and the CFA and the forty-nine million eligible, and go down to not therefore be it resolved that the village board authorizes the holding of a public hearing to provide further information about the CDBG grant and allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals, comments on the CDBG grant, um, on CB, CDBG program or proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing will be conducted pursuant to section five seventy dot four eight six, subpart one of the CFR and in compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act nineteen seventy-four as amended. The Village of Husk Falls will hold a public hearing on February ninth, twenty twenty-one at six PM via Zoom. Meeting, meeting details will be posted on the village websites, I need someone to offer this resolution.
Oh, alright. Rob said.
I heard Emily and, um, Deb, do you want to second that?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, any further discussion? Uh, we will do a roll call vote for this.
Trustee O'Malley? Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Both, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And we had, uh, trustee Marpy and trustee Alter.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Great. Alright, thank you very much, we are moving forward with that, uh, any more questions for Robert? Or Josh or Jim? Uh, in that case, uh, Robert, thank you for hopping in and, uh, joining us, hope you have a great rest of the evening, I'm sure we'll be in touch very soon.
Uh, and Rob, if I could ask, if
Yes.
if Delaware Engineering has a standard form public hearing notice for this process, if they could send it over to the village, we'll get that reviewed and timely, um, published.
I think, do we already have that by chance, Marie?
We do.
Okay, I think we already have that, Andy, I don't think you have it, but I think we got a copy of it, we'll get it to you.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Alright, excellent, and Robert, um, we'll double check more time on the, um, previous professional service agreements, but assuming all is good, we'll get this signed over to you probably tomorrow.
That's fine, alright.
Alright, thank you, Robert.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, announcements, you guys can see the announcement screen, correct?
Yes.
Between, uh, between teaching and, and doing these meetings, you'd think I would have more confidence with all this. Uh, we're still looking for two additional Zoom, uh, members for the zoning board, so please, uh, reach out to the village office, talk to Marie, uh, if you are interested, uh, we do have new signs ordered for the village parking lot, this is the one across from Cummings and near the Tri-State Federal Credit Union. Uh, the new signs will reflect the changes in local law number two of twenty twenty, uh, recent law we passed, a couple meetings ago, I think, or last meeting. Um, and Neil, I think it is report stated that they'll be, uh, probably arriving or installed, uh, within the next week or two. Uh, I did one review with trustees, uh, I had gotten a Civicure, um, newsletter and, um, they basically commented on, uh, what they've, uh, been able to achieve over the past year despite um, the fact that COVID, um, threw a monkey wrench into everything. Um, but they do have their new roof, and I know that a lot of, um, uh, the village were involved in so many aspects of, you know, reviewing things and going through inside traffic up and all that stuff, so, um, I just wanted to pass it on, it's, it's a, a big step forward for them. Um, I'm very excited to see what, um, they will continue to do, and it did, uh, in, in, um, their notes, uh, they did, uh, handwrite a, a thank you, um, to myself and to the board, I wanted to share the news of our progress, thanks to the generosity of an amazing community, including, um, your incredible rebate of the building rent of six hundred dollars. It takes a village and we have a very special one, uh, thank you, trustees. Um, that's from Barbara and Civicure, so I did want to pass that on, I'm eager to see what happens in twenty twenty-one from them. So at this point, we, uh, still have six members on the board, we had one step down, um, back in December, I have not had, um, a moment to, um, talk with a couple of expressed interest, I am going to speak with the trustees, um, and get their thoughts. Um, and, and speaking with Marie and Andy and reviewing the election law, even if I appointed someone, um, they are still, they would still have to run again for the seat. And Andy, I know we've done a lot of research on this and you've spoken to a bunch of people, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, they would be running and they would only have the one year to finish off, uh, the previous two-year, um, term, uh, that, uh, trustee Lewis had, is that correct?
Uh, Rob, you're correct on that, there'll, there'll be a what amounts to a special election, but it will be held on your general election date and there'll be a separate, uh, item on the ballot for finishing out the remaining one year on former trustee Lewis's term.
Okay.
And, yes, so there'll be one position for one year and the other trustee positions will be for the normal two-year term.
So I, I do, I'm sorry, Deb, please go.
So that means after the special election, we go back to the regular turnovers?
That's correct.
Schedule?
Yeah, that's what it's designed to do, is to keep you on track with the normal terms, so it'll only be finishing out the one year remaining on that normal term, if you will.
Then the person would be, be there February and March.
So if I appointed someone now, they would be through February and March, and that seat, starting on April first, would be determined by the March election. Regardless of if I appoint someone, so I do want to talk to the trustees and get their thoughts, either now or later, um, on if you think we should appoint someone to fill a, a couple months, like an appointment in the February meeting, or we just wait and, uh, allow, um, people to run, uh, in the election march.
Well, the only, I would say, right, if you're going to find, if you're, if you're going to appoint someone, hopefully it's someone who's willing, who wants to run in March. We don't, it doesn't make sense to have one someone fill the void for two months, because, I mean, being realistic, if we haven't filled it in the last two months, there's no urgency to fill it in the next two months, in my opinion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, and it gives time, it gives us, well, it gives us to February, because that, yes, I, based on that, I also had a question, is that correct, the bit, that we, the petitions are, start, can be, start to be passed on February second? But they have to be in by February ninth and only give you a week to get to put the signatures? Or did I read that incorrectly?
No, that is correct, Marie, that, we, we, we got a, and, and communication from NICOM and the schedule and everything has been kind of messed up because of the various delays. Um, but that is, that is our understanding and that the percentage, um, they had this strange convoluted rule about how to determine how many signatures based on the previous amount of signatures you have, but basically it's forty. So we only need forty signatures minimum this, uh, this time.
Right, okay, but I was more concerned about, I, I would, that seems like a very short timeframe, and I know in the past it seems like a lot longer, so you're saying it's based on the current COVID situation, why, being messed up is why it's such a short period?
Yeah, and related to the governor's executive order, right, Marie?
As far as I could follow and what I could read from the NICOM book, that, those were the dates that specified petitions to be passed and petitions to be back. Considering it's so
Oh, that, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we know.
Alright, Deb?
Just a couple of thoughts, considering that it's so hard to get people to run. If we appoint somebody willing to be appointed, they would, might be more comfortable running. You know what I mean? Because I think running scares a lot of people away. Also, speaking from personal experience, who knows what could happen in March? They could postpone it and postpone it and postpone it.
Yeah. That's, that's a good point, Kevin?
The other thing is too, that, um, if nobody gets petitions to run
That is a valid point.
Then we would have to, I believe, appoint somebody at the next meeting if there was somebody interested.
Yeah, so it's, it kind of sounds like trustees, you are, um, very much in favor of me appointing someone in the February meeting as long as they are also committed to running, which we would know at that time, because the period of the second to the ninth is when we need to be collecting signatures anyway.
I think that, I think that's a good idea, because if only one person turns in a petition for the seat, I mean, I think we can look at it then. Right, if only one person turns in a petition, that seems like a good idea, what happens if two people turn in a petition?
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't sound like as good of an idea then.
Okay, then when I, um, when I meet, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, Bobby.
Sorry.
No, no, go, please.
Just to clarify, just to clarify though, um, yes, there's going to be two different line items or actually two different, uh, elections per se for this, the, the four seats, right? You're saying that three plus the mayor will be on one line and then the individual other, the other, Vanessa's seat will be on another line, is that correct?
Andy?
Yeah, Bobby, that, that's correct, we actually got a form of a ballot today from NICOM that will have a line for the mayor, a line for the three trustee seats indicating it's a two-year term, and then a line for one trustee seat indicating it's a one-year term.
Okay, so that, that seat is just specific, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the top of the, the, say, there's four seats open and if five people ran, it wouldn't be the top four at large, it would be just, the, the one person is running for the one-year term regardless.
Yes, and in fact, NICOM advised us today that the nominating petition has to be specific for either the two-year term seat or the one-year term seat.
Okay.
Understood, okay.
Alright, and on the screen is the election schedule, oh, yeah, no.
So if you, if Rob doesn't appoint somebody, does everybody go on the same line?
No, that the nominating petitions to get onto that line for the one-year term
Are separate, it's still going to be separate.
It, it will still be different, and in fact, NICOM advised us today, if there are no nominating petitions filed for the one-year term seat, it could be decided by a write-in.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, that is some weird stuff.
There's a lot of stuff in politics these days.
Andy, is there a minimum number of votes you have to get to win that seat if you're doing a write-in?
Oh, it's a very good question, Kevin, I don't know the answer to it, um.
Cause typically, you ask, get a couple votes and
Yeah, my, my gut tells me no, quite frankly, on a write-in, um, but that's a good question to follow up with NICOM, if there are no nominating petitions and it is decided by write-in, is there a minimum number of votes needed?
I can see the trustees setting up a joke and writing in Ben Patton. Just kidding, you'll kill me for suggesting that, any other, um, questions, comments about the elections, I have the, um, schedule up on the screen. Okay, I'm going to move on then, a few mayor updates. Okay, I'm gonna move on then. A few mayor updates. Uh, last meeting, uh, I specifically called.
Rob, Rob, I'm sorry, to, to, um, interrupt. I should have asked before, are, are there ways? How are we gonna let people know that they need to, they want to run, they need to step up and get a petition and all that stuff?
Uh, word of mouth on the village website, on Facebook, um, hopefully the, the, the press who are on will, will make note of that in their, um, their reports.
Thank you.
Yep. So, um, last month I asked for a season of sacrifice and, um, you know what, who's it falls, we came through. Because, um, I know that as winter has approached, numbers have gone up across the country. And in the county, our numbers peaked and went down in the area. We went from. Um, before Thanksgiving, having maybe a handful of cases a week, and then we started to have averaging four to seven a day. Uh, and since then, we really, really slowed down, even when communities very close and locally near us are having some really high numbers. We have had very few. So I just wanted to thank the community for responding, for taking, uh, this seriously. Um, it, it, it's, it's really, really helpful. As a teacher, I am through the roof excited to be able to be back in hybrid mode with the kids, seeing the kids two days a week. It's just so great for the kids. It's so great for teachers. I'm just really, really thrilled. So thank you and please keep it up. And part of the reason I'm asking for that is because the news has been talking about this new COVID strain where they're trying not to call it the UK strain. And just because it was detected in the UK, but it's not like the UK strain, just that's the first time they noticed it. The reason it's making news is because, uh, of how much easier this strain spreads. And just like all viruses, there are mutations, but this one is likely to last and become a big deal because it's spreading easier. Um, so I just want to urge people and we, we already know, or the past week, we've already. We started to see cases in California and Colorado because we started looking for it. Uh, over the past couple of days, we've seen a couple of cases in New York as close as Saratoga. Uh, there may have been one even closer than that. So we know it's here, we know it's in the community. Um, and it just, you know, keep up, keep up the masks, keep up the social distance, keep up the small bubbles within the families. Um, because, um, even as vaccines are rolling out, it's, uh, just another reason why we could have some serious spread. Uh, in these winter months and vaccines are beginning to roll out and there have been some. Questions and some confusion on things, but, uh, if you have any questions or, 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 or in that group. The groups who are, are getting ready, um, to, uh, sign up or get the vaccine, the first dose of vaccine administered. Reach out to Rensselaer County Health or the State Health Department. Uh, and I, I do know that, uh, there's two different, uh, vaccines that are commonly being used. Each of them has different requirements about how. Spread apart, shot one and shot two are, um, do some research just so you know, uh, and understand. That even if you get shot one, you're still not fully vaccinated. Even when you get shot two, you still have to wait a couple of weeks to be fully vaccinated. And one of the big things that we're waiting to see with, um, studying this is if you're vaccinated. Um, you have an extremely high likelihood based on the efficacy of these that you will not get COVID. But there's still questions on whether you can spread COVID. So you can have it in you, not succumb to it, not have sickness, not have symptoms. But you, we don't know if it will also stop people from being a carrier. And that's going to be an important thing that's going to be figured out, I think, over the coming weeks and months. Um, so even though vaccines are rolling out, which is really, really good news. Um, we still, I'm still expecting that masks and social distancing will remain. Uh, a part of our normal social structure for at least the next six months, uh, as things roll out and as we learn more. Uh, about mask and, uh, you know, as, as our knowledge, um, improves, the science and then the guidance will improve and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to mention that. Does anybody want to, uh, ask questions or make comments on that? Okay. Um, and I will say that I'm on Twitter a lot following news people and I follow a lot of epidemiologists and there's a lot of great studies and research out there. So I like to stay on top of that. Um, and I know that's something that's being studied quite a bit. All right, I have a few comments related to the, uh, insurrection. That happened at the Capitol, Washington DC. On January sixth, twenty twenty-one, it was, uh, it was disturbing. It was distressing. It was a dark moment in our more modern American history. It left me shocked, furious, depressed, horrified. Uh, despite its unfortunately predictable nature, it's still hard to believe what happened, what led up to it. And all of the atrocities that occurred during that day. And I want to make it clear that it was a deeply egregious and wholly inappropriate incident. Uh, I hope that the lead-up to that day, the actual day itself and the aftermath. Are fully investigated and the consequences, uh, be strong for those who were involved, who committed wrongdoings. The ideology behind the attack is, I think, something that needs to be called out and rejected. It was not about party affiliation. It was not about left or right. It was not about Trump or Biden. It was not about liberal or conservative. It was. A more twisted hypocritical combination of conflicting mantras. Where they can call themselves patriots, but then they can break into a capital where you can. Discuss your respect for the country and the flag, but then use that flag to cause property damage and commit assaults. Um, where they call out problems with the government while at the same time calling. For members of the governments to be attacked and killed. Uh, where they say that blue lives matter, but then they attack law enforcement. It's, um. The actions and desires were nothing, uh, short of acting out of anger and wanting chaos. Any other claim. Is really in direct conflict with their actions. So I. Pray for anyone who believes that these actions were justified. I pray for all of the law enforcement involved. Uh, and their families. I pray for healing for them, healing for the nation, and I just sincerely pray and hope. That, uh, this violence stops. And I know, uh, that there have been a couple of people who have expressed concerns about safety locally. Uh, I do want to assure you that we have no evidence of any, uh, safety concerns here, but we are monitoring, we are connected. To other law enforcement channels. I spoke with the chief earlier about this. We're monitoring. Uh, we will be staffed throughout the week, all hours. Um, we don't expect anything, but we are prepared. Um, and I just hope that we make it through the next week and a half. Uh, in a pretty low-key way and we can get back to government being boring again and we can focus on. The real issues. Trustees, if you want to say anything, you certainly can. Thank you.
Well said, Rob. I don't know, think anything else is needed.
Thank you, Craig. All right, um, that ends mayor updates. We have the people to be heard section, um, just as a reminder over Zoom, uh, you'll need to, uh. Um, speak up, say your name and your address and we'll give you a couple of minutes to share whatever your concerns are. Um, I don't know if I can see absolutely everyone at the same time. So if you would like to share something, please just say I'd like to share what your name is. I'll get a list of who wants to share. Okay, I'm not hearing any.
Can I put a different, can I put a different hat on and say something? Is that allowed?
Sure.
Okay, there's just, I know Mary Ann. Um, sent an email to you guys, to us guys. Um, asking us, because the armory is, I'm, you know, it's the munis, it's the head of the, the town offices are there. That could become a priority for plowing. I know this last snowstorm was crazy, crazy, but. Um, if that could, uh, I don't know how that works, um, because I don't know how a lot of things work yet. Uh, but, um, that could be put on a higher priority than it has been. Cause it's not just the, and a, a building, it's. It's where the town offices are and people need to get there.
Neil, what do we exactly take care of around the armory? In terms of snow? Neil, you got on mute yourself.
All we maintain is the Rensselaer County parking lot. And parking lots are the last thing on our list to do. As far as, uh. Step cleaning and stuff for the town offices, that should be done by town employees or a local contractor. You know, we get out, we clean the sidewalks when we can, but our streets come first, parking lot second. Sidewalks are at the end of the list.
So sidewalks and parking lots, no removal is at the very end of everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that sidewalk one that we clear?
If we can get to it, you know, yes. But like that big storm we had, it was hours before we actually got back out to start doing sidewalks, so.
Yeah, that, that snowstorm, would you call that like a once in a decades storm? Or maybe once in a couple of years?
Once in a couple of years, maybe.
Yeah, that was, that was a lot of snow for a lot of time. Um.
Yeah, I mean, army people, we, we get that. Um, I'm on the army board, which is why I'm speaking out, but, um. It just, uh, if, if, I don't know how, I don't know how your priority list works or anything like that, but. Um, just to know that it's the town offices and people do need to get in and out. Also that it's, um, I believe it's an emergency. Location for disasters or something?
I don't believe it is anymore.
Oh, it's not?
No, they took the generator out.
Also, it can't be.
I, yeah, I believe the emergency generator was removed from the premises, so.
Yes, it was, but it didn't work anyway.
Oh.
So.
There, there's, there's.
I guess the question, I guess the question was from the armory was that not so much. During a storm or right after the storm, but when they do the streets, like they do the church and some of the other areas that they could. Also consider the armory at that same time.
We do. We just, we just have to have time to do it.
Yeah, no, but I, I'm saying if you go to the church, if you could come down that swing down that way as well.
We start by the churches, we work down Main Street, down John Street, up Church Street and then back up on. That's our process that works the best. We work with traffic that way, you know?
It sounds like what Neil is trying to say is, um, with everything they have to do with the manpower they have and the equipment they have, there isn't. Really can't do it any sooner than we are, are able to. Is that, is that what you're saying, Neil?
Yeah, pretty much, you know, I know in the past, the town highway department's gone down and cleaned around the armory. You know, they help out once in a while. So maybe the town can run down and scoop the sidewalks off to help the town out, you know?
Well, we'll talk, we'll talk to them about that too, but.
You know, I realize it's a. In a village, but it's also used to be maintained by the town.
And it's not a criticism, Neil, of anything you guys are doing or not doing. It's just, just a request and a, so.
Well.
Yeah, and it was a one in a, it was in a blue moon event, so.
All right. Um, anyone else? All right, in that case, um, trustees, you have the report sent out to you. Um, is Denise on? I don't think Denise was on this one.
No, sir, they're not going to be on tonight.
Okay, um, trust us, anything anybody wants to note about the, uh, treasures reports? Or ask about? All right, here now, looking for motion to approve the treasures report?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Sentence. Carries. Chief Police Department reports.
Yes, good evening. Um. For the total calls in December were eighty-nine, ironically, in November there were eighty-nine. Total calls for two thousand and twenty was one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. Total calls for, uh, last year at this time were one thousand six hundred and eight. Total arrests for Nov- uh, December were one, total arrests in November were seven, total arrests for the year for two thousand and twenty were eighty-nine. Uh, the arrests that we did make this week or this month was for petty larceny. Um, I'll have a full report ready for, uh, the board to review and I'll send it out to you. It's probably within the next couple of weeks on just the, the past year. Uh, the citizen review board and Marie can, um, is in on the, on the meeting here as well. Um, we're just about ready to go to the final draft. There's a few things that we do have to discuss and finalize. Um, but that is really moving along well. And, uh, Marie, if there's anything you want to add to that as well. I think we can hopefully have it to the board by March, maybe a little sooner for a, a public hearing, but. I, I think, uh, we should be pretty much on target.
Are you in agreement with that, Marie?
Yes, I think we should be all set, um, to present it to the board for March.
Okay.
Andy, that fits with the timeline needed, right?
So here's the timeline. It, the governor's executive order requires the board of trustees to. Act on this, the report, the procedures, either by resolution or local law. So, but there is a public input, a public, in essence, public hearing requirement. Whether it's by resolution or by local law. So just consider that in timing. That the board, and it could be by a special meeting, so we, we meet this, recall this needs to be completed by the end of March and submitted, but to the state by April one. So if, if the report is ready to be presented to the board of trustees at the March meeting, just know there still needs to be a public hearing. And receive input and give adequate time to consider the public comments and. Again, it finalized by the end of March, so it can be submitted to the state April.
Andy, I think there is a possibility that there's an extension on it. I'm not quite sure. I thought I read it in one of the. Memos that were sent out, um, I guess I, either I or you should do a follow-up. That's given an extension based on the pandemic. Um, I think a lot of other departments are, have fallen behind. Some departments haven't even started such. Or they just started it in the beginning of the year. So I think there's a possibility there may be, and I could be wrong. Um.
Bob, I'll, I'll look at that tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate that. Uh, the only other thing that we have is that, uh, is an update on the vaccine for, uh, tier one B, which includes, uh, police. Um, I've been notified and we keep it in touch with the county. It looks like they're going to possibly have, um. I was looking for this week, but it doesn't look like this week. It might be next week or the week after that they'll have, um, our department. Will be registering for the vaccine. I think they're trying to move it from the local hospitals to a more centralized location here in Rensselaer County. But those details are still being worked out. So hopefully all officers, if they wish, it's not being mandated by our department. Um, but, um, if they wish to be vaccinated, um, it'll be available for them. And I will give an update to the board next month as to, uh, the status of it.
Chief, I know we share a lot of reasons of officers with other departments, in particular Troy. We have some officers who are also EMTs and. Um, are we, um, sort of keeping track of who already has started getting their vaccine through their process?
Yes, right now we've had two of our officers that have been, that have completed that vaccine. They work, uh, in the EMS field. Um, and that, that's already been provided to them and they've already taken it. As to the other officers in other departments, I've kept in touch with those officers. But I'll know when those officers will be getting the vaccine, just based on the fact that it's being distributed to the departments in. Rensselaer County. So they're all go at the same time, with the exception of maybe one or two officers that may be in Albany County that. Um, would possibly go with that department there, but most of our, most of the guys will be going through our department or. It appears Troy.
Are any departments locally or across the state mandating the vaccine?
Uh, not, not that I know of from what my research has done on that and my conversation with other departments is that something that you really can't mandate to somebody.
Yeah, I was.
I know that that question can pop up and we can encourage, um, but. At this point, I, I, and Andy would best answer that, answer that. If we ever try to make that mandatory, it might create a little bit of a.
Particular interest to make it man, mandatory. I was just curious.
No, no, I know you don't. I, I thought of that myself because I've had some officers question whether they should have it or not. But I think once we sit down and, and we have a discussion amongst ourselves, it seems like all officers are in agreement that this is. Something that, uh, it's, it benefits not just them, but the community.
Right, any questions for Chief?
Uh, Bob, I saw there was an accident in Pittstown, almost down near the Tamarack Road, and it looked to be a Husick Falls police car there. They usually go that far out and.
No, our car was cut, our car was on a detail coming out of Troy and he came upon that accident and called it in. No, he wasn't, he didn't, we weren't dispatched there nor did we go down on our own. It was, uh, like I said, he was coming back on a detail and he came upon that accident.
Okay, I just was wondering, it seemed like quite a ways out from the village to, to respond to that, so.
I was here at the station covering while he went down there and, and, um. Yeah, it, it surprised me when I heard him on the air and then when I, when I called him, he, you know, he explained to me what was going on, so.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right.
And just the other thing there, I, just to back up a little bit of what you were saying, uh, Mayor, um. We're prepared for any issues that may appear or may come up, um, next week. I know you, you mentioned the manpower, you and I had that meeting, but. Um, I've had like one, maybe two inquiries from the public that had some concerns and I assured them that. Those concerns are being monitored and, um, at this point, I'm very confident that we're, uh, we're going to be fine.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the Chief? Uh, hearing none, looking for motion to approve, uh, the police report.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Code enforcement report. Mark?
Hi, I am here.
Hi, Mark.
Um, really, December was kind of slow for me, uh, you know, it's that. Not, just not a lot going on, time of year and all that stuff, but, uh. There, but it's already picked up in January, I can tell you that. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions on anything.
There are, um, a couple of properties that have come up in discussion, um, Andy and I are starting to look into, uh, one fifteen Main Street as it, uh, um. Is an imminent, uh, situation right now and, uh, also in terms of the Woodsbrook buyout. Um, so I'll have an update, uh, hopefully for the board, maybe in, in a week, um, if any progress has been made with that. Um, or a week or two, um. In regards to, what's the one on Mechanic Street, sixty-four?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
Isn't.
Thank you.
Isn't it sixty-two?
Yeah, sixty-two, thank you, sorry, um. If, and if that's something that the village, and the village owns this, that's something that needs to come down. Is that something where when we are doing the demo work related to Woodsbrook properties that we've acquired, we can also. Tie that in, not through the Woodsbrook, but through the contractor or bid it some way, that way where they're, we're going for both, is that a thing?
Rob, I'll look into that. I, I can see the, the economic benefit if, if part of that Woodsbrook property demolition is bid out.
Hmm.
Um, you want to take advantage of mobilization. Of the contractor at one time and get those properties done. We can look at that. Obviously, the, the grant monies can't be used toward that. But you may almost piggyback onto that timeframe and, and save some cost. On demolition services on the village-owned property. We'll look at that.
And, and Andy, based on the, um, the Woodsbrook schedule that we have and how much time we have left. Is it fair to say that summer or fall is when we would be doing any of the demo? Uh, the, the demo for the properties that we've acquired?
Well, subject to, to discussion internally. Um, the, the state has agreed to extend the timeframe for that Woodsbrook agreement through the fall, through October. Uh, the village does need to get in, in some updated information to the state on that.
Yeah.
So i- in terms of timing, Rob, it, it's really subject to internal scheduling. Um, there are some, obviously some things that would need to be done to lead up to actual demolition of the building. The, the village has been through that before. Um, so certainly no later than summer or fall because that's, the fall is when the, the grant agreement would currently expire.
Neil, that's something we're going to have to, uh, have on our radar to talk about as we approach summer. Um, scheduling all that stuff, but we're, we're still a little bit of ways away from that. And Mark, I know those properties have been something we've talked about a lot, so I just want to make sure that, that you guys know that that's something very much on our radar. Uh, were there any other properties Mark want to highlight or any trustees want to ask about?
No, but, uh, I know Andy was talking to Bill Film at the county as well as I was about, there's a upcoming auction of county properties. And I think one fifteen is included and it's been put off until the, uh, property sales are put off for another month because of, uh. The, uh, governor's order on no, uh, foreclosures, I think. Andy?
Yeah, Kevin, it's, what the governor has said is, in fact, there could be a stay on lien foreclosure proceedings, including tax foreclosures. If the property owner can show that, um, failure to pay is tied to COVID and, and COVID impact. And if that's the case, uh, Kevin, it'll be longer than thirty days, it'll, it'll just be extended for a period of time.
I think the, the, uh, owners, the current owners would get notified by the county, they'll have thirty days or two weeks to get in notice in writing. Uh, what their plans are for the property or whether they're still interested in keeping the property, then after that they can, they can proceed.
That's, that's, and, and, but if that, uh, response by the property owner, I think if they affirm. Um, on that response that their inability to pay, which has resulted in the foreclosure. Uh, is due to, to COVID impact, uh, then the, the proceeding can be further stayed, but that, that's.
In the case of one fifteen Main Street, there's nobody living there right now, so I can't foresee any problems with that one. And that's the one probably most intimate right now that we need to take care of.
Correct. I'll remind the board, that's one of the properties within the Woodsbrook buyout program. We have had discussions with the owner. Uh, there is a contract executed for sale agreement. We're just trying to coordinate with, with the county.
Any other questions for Mark? If not, looking for motion to approve the code enforcement report?
Motion.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions. Carries. Still no community service reports. Uh, Village Clerk, Deputy Clerk report, anything you want to highlight, Marie or trustees to ask about?
No, I think we, we're taking payments in on the December utilities, um, payments are coming in pretty steadily, so that's good. And a lot of, uh, transfer stations going out for the new year, so.
All right. Looking for, unless there's a question, looking for a motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you, Craig. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, Highway Department, anything Neil you want to mention? Because I know you're a big talker on these meetings, or Bobby, anything you want to highlight? Neil?
Hi, good, well, I know that Neil, the, the, uh, the. Christmas trees, uh, pickup has started, they'll be doing, picking up trees through January twenty-ninth. After that, if they're not, if you haven't had it picked up, you have to bring it to the transfer station yourself, or they still be taking them at the transfer station at no cost. Um, Neil, I had a question regarding your, um, you sent me a, uh, an email regarding the chips and the possible sidewalks. Um, what, how many feet of sidewalk were you talking about potentially replacing?
Uh, it could be close to, I'm estimating between probably three and four hundred feet.
Three and four hundred feet?
Yep, three to four hundred feet, maybe.
Okay, no, it just came out funky on your email, so that's why I, I couldn't read it, that's why I was asking.
All right.
And that's on Main Street, correct?
Yep, yep.
Okay. But, uh, and you said the signs for the parking, the, uh, new parking, uh. Lot signs, parking signs will be going up next week, correct?
I put the dig safe notice out today. They've got till Thursday to acknowledge, so we might be starting to put them up, um, Friday morning. If everything goes well, so.
Okay, good.
Good. Any questions? Hearing none, looking for motion to approve the Highway Department report?
Motion.
Second.
Six people and, uh, Craig seconded, all right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, I love how the lag just made everything happen at once. Uh, sewer report, Kenny and Keith have been quite busy, um. Anything, uh, that we want to highlight there? There is actually one piece of business I forgot to put on the agenda, which I have at the end. We did get a request, uh, from another waste hauler, um, to. Um, have permission to, uh, dump, uh, septic, um, sewage at our facility as other waste haulers do. Um, is, uh, Empire Septic Services LLC, uh, he has his DEC permit number, he has his T I N number. Um, and Kenny is good with it, so, um, that is one thing I, I forgot to put on the agenda, um. So I think it would just, I think it would just be nice for us to officially motion and approve that we are, uh. Accepting and allowing him to do that. Andy, is that all right?
Yes, it is, Rob.
Trustees, any questions or, uh, on that?
Do we have any other commercial waste haulers or are they all municipal? Or are they all commercial?
They're all commercial.
I think they're all commercial.
Okay.
And this will just be another one.
Then I have no other questions.
All right. Um, I think he's based out of Granville, um, so in that, uh, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to approve Empire Septic Service LLC. Um, a waste hauler to, uh, use our facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily, thank you, Craig. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions. Carries. Marie, can you just give, uh, Kenny a heads up tomorrow that we, uh, approved that? Uh, apart from that, Kenny and Keith have been involved with all their normal stuff, plus some, uh, work. Uh, with, uh, Sterling Environmental, Leachate, uh, pump, uh, setup there. Um, and some other things throughout the village, so unless you guys have any questions, I will, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, accept the sewer department report.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Carries. Finally, water report. Anything, uh, Emily, you want to highlight or talk about?
Jim went over a few things with me today, um, he's so much better at explaining these things. I know the work for Wells Seven is going to be postponed till the summer. Um. And then there's one thing they want to do with the filter. They have the filters, they need the parts and they're waiting to get it scheduled and then as soon as they can get it scheduled, they'll get that taken care of.
That's replacing the, um, the normal facility filters unrelated to GAK, right? It's the stuff we talked about.
Correct, correct, yep, and I, last time it was done, I believe he said it was in two thousand and nine, so it lasted a long time. And we definitely got our money worth and it's all good.
Now someone else gets to get our money worth.
Yeah, um. I don't, other than that, I think it was pretty quiet. They did all the regular testing, maintenance and whatnot. Um, and it sounds like they're on track for January.
And, and thank you to our water sewer and how you guys who had to handle the, uh, watering break in late December, mid to late December. I forgot to mention that, so thank you, guys. Uh, all right, any other questions? Uh, if not, I will entertain a motion, uh, to prove the water department report.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? All right, carries, uh, we have minutes to approve from the. Come on, where are you? There we go, um, which meeting is that one? December tenth, regular meeting, so unless you had any changes you wanted to make in the minutes. I'm looking for motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Rob.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Uh, we'll give it to Emily, um, for no apparent reason at all, sorry, Bobby. All right, uh.
No offense taken.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Okay. Moving on, trustee committee reports, I'm just going to go around how I see it on the screen. Craig, anything?
No, nothing, Ron.
Kevin, anything?
Uh, yeah, um. A couple of months ago, I brought up the idea of having a mural on the Walgreens store. Uh, next to Key Bank and I approached Walgreens and Walgreens doesn't own the building, but they did give their approval. So I went to the, uh, holding company which owns the building, uh, gave them the information and they also approved having the mural in the building. And that will help, happen sometime this spring.
Outstanding. Do we have people who are going to do it or do we know what they're going to put up there?
Um, it's, it's a, uh, owl and, uh, some of the, uh. Other graphics part is still isn't done yet. I mean, the part that says Village of Husick Falls or Husick Falls, whatever we're going to put on there, that's not done yet. But, um, she's from the Cambridge area, she's done quite a few other murals in the, uh, northeast. And she also did the one at Husick Provisions.
Great.
Great, Kevin.
Great, Kevin.
Great job, Kevin, that's a great job, Kevin, thank you.
Awesome. All right, anything else, Kevin?
That's it.
All right, Emily?
Um, for Ushwama, I've done the routine check signing. We haven't had a meeting yet since the last one, which I believe was October, September, October. Um, I did speak with Matt regarding an issue which I spoke to the mayor about already. Um, and it's just about our contract that's going to be coming up, that's due. And what we want to do in regards to that. Um. That's it for Ushwama. For the Greenway, I haven't heard anything from anyone, so. Not sure where that is. And that's it.
And Marie, can you? Give me a reminder tomorrow, I want to email. All the B and L guys who are involved to make sure that they include Emily on, on, uh, any Greenway discussions. I don't think we've had any recently that I can remember, but I just want to make sure Emily is, is, uh, on, on that list.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you, Emily. Uh, Deb?
I don't have anything official to say since I'm not still that, um, in charge, but I was still looking forward to having a meeting with you, Rob.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Deb.
And tell me.
I need to have a meeting with you, I need to have a meeting with, uh, Kevin and Emily about transfer station. And I've also been, um, one of the reasons we're in flux is because of the, um. Uh, what's the thing we do in April, um? Andy, help me out.
Organizational meeting.
Reorganization meeting, um, I've been thinking about some different ways, um, that we could get some, um. Trustees plugged into more things, um, and involved in, 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 in some of the day-to-day things as well. Um, but I have to run those to the office and run those through, uh, Andy as well. Um, so we do have a lot coming and I know that, that reorganization meeting will happen in April. Um, we'll get things plugged in, uh, there as well, uh, but yes, Deb, uh, next week, let's, let's get together.
Yes, please. And the other thing is. Yes, please. And the other thing is that, um, I just want to bring up again, uh, which, whichever hat I'm wearing. Um, the, uh, the arm, Hacy Three used to be in charge of the village cleanup. Before that, it was the village being in charge of the village cleanup. Kevin, you probably know more than I do. But Huzick Rising slash the, the Armory, I'm not even sure which one, um, took care of it last year. And, um, it would be great if the village wanted to pitch in some way and help, help get us volunteers. Help, I don't know, people bring their own stuff. It doesn't cost any money. It just costs, you know, manpower and woman power.
Neil, can you, um, help, help us know what, what we typically do on, on village cleanup in the past? Neil, or Kevin, uh, can you, can you explain what, what we village typically have done in the past with cleanup?
For the AC three village cleanup day?
Yeah.
Um, usually just the village parks a truck in the parking lot and volunteers do most of the work for that.
Neil, I know we had one, one year where we had a plan, but it didn't quite work out. Um, but that was a couple of years ago and I, I don't think anyone there is involved anymore. What else? Is there anything else, Neil?
No, um, usually we just leave a couple of village trucks sitting around and they fill them up. We take them up to transfer station and that Monday and dump them. You know, we can supply a few brooms and shovels, but you know, we really don't supply a lot anymore. It's just the basic trucks and um, you know, a few hand tools here and there.
Well, if the village, you know, as the board could help promote it, that would be helpful. I mean, that doesn't cost anything. It's just, you know, rah rah, let's clean up the village.
Do we have a date or, um, okay.
Not yet. Um, but I'll let you know.
Awesome, awesome.
The, the other thing is, um, that, you know, Hacy Three doesn't exist anymore. So people from the Armory and people from Huzick Rising have just kind of kept it going. So, you know, we don't have a whole lot of fun, so whatever, whatever help we would appreciate.
Got it. Thank you, Deb.
Also too, there could be more to do this year. Typically, uh, community service does a lot of work in the community. And they haven't really been active for, geez, at least probably six to eight months now, so.
Yeah, and school community service as well because of all the COVID stuff.
Excellent point. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Um, anything else, Deb?
That's all I got.
All right. Thank you Bobby.
No, I don't have anything, Rob.
Okay, thank you. All right. In that case, let us move on. Uh, old business, I still need to set up the meeting with Kevin and Emily. I'm an awful person for not doing it. So I'm looking for a motion to table this until next meeting.
Motion.
Second, I've been, uh, I've been checking lately with, um, different communities to see what they charge and, uh,
Oh, that's great, Kevin. Thank you.
I think that really, we should really look at what we're charging between residents and non-residents. I was up there this past weekend just watching for a little bit. I think Chuck has actually written down some recommendations, I think, which he gave to Nadia so we should look at too.
Awesome, 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 awesome. That's great. All right. So we have the motion to table, um, all in favor of tabling it? Aye. Both are extensions?
Aye.
Okay, Carrie's, thank you. All right, uh, new business. So we had talked last, um, meeting quite a bit about the chicken law. And, um, we, um, decided to sort, in a sense, go back and work on a couple of things. One of the things we, uh, that we, we came up as we drafted the new version, thanks to Mark, who again is, um, really, really on top of the details of this. And I really just cannot state, uh, uh, that enough how great that is. Um, is the, the question around zoning. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to share our existing zoning. And the reason that we're sharing this is because one of the people who brought up some questions about the chicken law last year actually lives in a place, according to this map, which is zoned industrial, which is this purple area over here. And the way the chicken law is written, um, it's specific only to, I think it was residential one, two and three. Andy, do you want to elaborate more on this and sort of what the question is that we need to pose and get, uh, thoughts from, from the trustees?
Sure. So the draft of the, we'll call it the chicken law, did limit the keeping of chickens in those lots in the R1, R2 and R3 zoning district. I think the intent there was in those residential areas in the town is where you, you would allow maintaining chickens. But there will be locations in other zoning districts that also are used for residential purposes. That happens on zoning maps and in zoning laws. And those properties become grandfathered uses, even though a residence may be in an industrial zone. It doesn't mean you, you can't, can no longer use the property for residential purposes. You can, it's just non-conforming. And you continue with the residential use. The way this chicken law is written though, it doesn't address non-conforming residential uses. It just limits the keeping of chickens within those specific R1, 2 and 3 zoning districts. So Rob's correct. If the public comment that was received at the public hearing was from a property owner that already had chickens, he wanted to be able to maintain them under this local law. But when looking back at where that property owner lives, it was in an industrial district. She wouldn't be able to keep the, the chickens or obtain a permit from the building department. So that's, that kind of defines the issue of the, the policy, the intent of allowing the keeping of chickens in residential zones. But what does the village want to do with those properties that are used for residential purposes? But located in another zoning district. And keep in mind, there's another zoning concept here, which is if you provide for an allowable use in the zoning district, it has to apply to the entire zoning district. You can't say we would allow this use only within this certain section or part of the industrial district. A, a zoning principle is if a use is permitted in a zoning district, it has to, as a matter of law, uh, law, apply to all the properties within that zoning district. So keep that in mind, because if you say, I, I would rather allow chickens to be a- allowed in the industrial district, everywhere that's purple on the zoning map, someone could keep chickens. So, and it also gets difficult to say, well, we'd allow it in an industrial district if you're a residential use. That, that becomes from a zoning compliance perspective, very difficult. So I think the board has to look at this map. The identified zoning districts and, and Mark, if you could chirp in at some point on your thoughts on this and decide where in the village, within which zoning districts, the, the board would think it's appropriate to, to have chickens maintained under the terms of, of this law. Mark, do you have anything to add?
Well, my thoughts would be, you know, the restrictions within the law itself, um, should be sufficient no matter where. I mean, you know, a single bane going to want to have chickens? You know, probably not, but if they decided to have them, they're still going to be limited the same way, uh, with the same restrictions that everybody else will. And, and I think, uh, the law itself is, is drawn up in such a way that it is somewhat limiting. Um, so, uh, I don't know. You know, I, I, I don't see an issue with opening it up to the other zoning areas, but you know, maybe I'm missing something.
Another interesting point is I think with the way the law is written, could the commercial industrial rating is also not something that we would allow, which is this pink area here along First Street, which means those properties also would not be able to, I think, according to the law.
Yep. Yes, that's correct.
So trustees, thoughts on this? Um, I think, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the easiest thing is simply to just not be specific to various zoning areas and just say anywhere within the village, but all of the rest of the rules still apply. And is that something we want to do?
From, from a local law perspective, you could certainly say the keeping of chickens is allowed in all zoning districts in the town or any, or in the village or anywhere within the village. You can do that.
Village, right?
Yeah, in the, but just be aware that then chickens can be maintained in compliance with the law, with, with the, the restrictions that are in the law. But they could be maintained anywhere within, within the village, regardless of zoning district. And if that's something the board wants to do, the law can be written that way.
Well, I think everybody kind of, until I happened to notice that, everybody kind of thought that's the way it was going to be. You know, it was going to be village-wide. I was surprised to, to pick that out. You know, uh, I wish I'd caught it the first time around with the other stuff, but.
So trustees, what are your thoughts on that? In my mind, I think the easiest thing is simply just to allow it in the village, regardless of zoning.
I, like Mark just said, I, I was on the assumption that it included the entire village. I wasn't even limiting, limiting it to uh, zoning districts. Because Andy, you're saying we couldn't, so you're saying, for example, the person who currently has chickens and lives in a resident, or the industrial district, we couldn't even, uh, uh, authorize a variance, correct? Or the zoning board cannot. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's not set up that way. This was set up so that it's a administrative permit process at the building department. And, and there's not a variance procedure in here. It was limited to those residential one, two and three zoning districts.
Well, is there a reason why we wouldn't want them to have?
Okay.
Be able to do it in other districts?
I think it would only be if we didn't want industrial companies or properties owned industrial to, to do that, but I, I don't see a reason to do that myself.
One thing I will add, it, it, Mark is correct that the law is written regarding setback requirements, location on the lot, things like that. If you allow it anywhere in the village, that's what it means, including commercial property. If it meets these restrictions, it can go anywhere. So just think about, is there anywhere within the village where you don't think that that, it would be a good idea to have chickens maintained legally under this law? If the answer is no, we think these restrictions adequately protect the village. So chickens could be maintained anywhere within the village limits. That's okay. But if you sit back and say, well, really in our, for instance, downtown business section, if someone could meet these requirements, would we like chickens walking around? That, th- those are some things to think about. And the answer could still be yes. So if you want the law written in such a way that chicken, chickens can be maintained anywhere within the village limits, that's okay. That's, that's your legislative discretion. It'll be written that way.
Yeah, that's a good point, especially in the downtown area, whether or not anybody meets that criteria is another point.
I'm trying to think downtown, who would have a yard large enough based on the rules of the law. And, and again, the law states that it can't be a front yard. Has to be a backyard or in case of no backyard, the discretion goes to the code enforcement to put it on the side area. I don't think anyone in the downtown area would even be able to do it.
You know, I could see some, the area bordering, um, Classic and Harder Lane and some of those areas. There's probably some by Wood Park as well. Maybe Hall Street.
Someone's got some nice music in the background. I'm probably hearing everything else.
Houses, right?
What's that? Hall Street?
I'm just looking at the blue that's in the, um, in the map that you've got in front of us.
And speaking of the blue, Rob, I hate to be, where Eldridge Street isn't, is by Elm Street in Roward Avenue. Eldridge Street is over between Mechanic, the Alpha Mechanic Street on, between Coming and between, uh,
Yeah.
Madison and White.
Yeah, I don't know why that's labeled incorrectly. I know, I think the, the, the labels were supposed to be helpful, but I don't think that messes up the zoning. I think that just shows, but you're right, that's labeling correctly.
It seems to me if, you know, if there are setbacks and, you know, amount of land and all that stuff and that, it doesn't matter. It could be the whole village because everybody is, will be required to have the same
Yeah.
kind of setback. So if you don't have enough property, um, you know, a street in the village, then they don't and they can't.
Right. And what is, what is the harm in allowing them within the entire village? When we first go to the public hearing and pass it as a law? And if we run into issues with down the road, there's nothing that says we can't change the law, correct?
Correct. Yeah, you're correct on that, Bobby.
So it sounds to me like we are good with changing the way we have drafted the law to allow for it in any part of the village and proceed that way. And if by chance we find some issues, we can always ma- uh, modify it through a, a new local law. Is that, is that where I'm hearing from trustees?
I agree. You got to start somewhere. You know, with it just, it's like that with everything. You, 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 you don't know what's going to happen until you put it into place. And then you adjust from there.
That's great, Deb. Thank you.
I mean, as a teacher, you know.
Like you said, with the setbacks and everything, as long as they, as long as they have all the, the, are in compliance with all the, the, uh, requirements, it, it shouldn't be an issue what they're, in what they're zoned as.
Any more comments from trustees?
Residential areas are probably going to have a small.
Okay, sorry Bobby. The lag is making me cut you off by accident, I think. Uh, any more comments from trustees? Otherwise, I think, uh, Andy, we've gotten the message from, from the board on how to proceed. And next month, we will reintroduce the local law and set the public hearing for the month after.
Right. And if I could, Rob, just, uh, again, the, the trustees have seen this, but there has been a definition of chicken added to the draft. That came up, uh, during the public hearing. And we've also added that multifamily can keep chickens with the consent of all the unit owners. But Bobby, we added that one of the units must be owner occupied. So we didn't have the situation with the absentee owner. So that's been added. And then Craig, you did have a comment uh, early on in the process about, well, what if people are currently keeping chickens? Are they grandfathered or would they have to comply? And this is set up so that they would need to comply. But one thing that I did add and would propose for your consideration would be for those that are currently maintaining chickens, they get, be given a period of time to come into compliance. So generally they're not out of compliance on day one because they don't have their permit. And, and this is proposed to give them up to six months, up to a half a year, a hundred and eighty days to come in and get their, their permit from the building department, kind of like a grace period to, to get into compliance. Anyone proposing to start keeping chickens would still need to get the permit before any chickens are on the property. But if there are people that are currently keeping chickens, this would now create a provision to give them a, a six-month grace period where they could come in and get the permit from Mark without being immediately in non-compliance or technically in violation. So we added that too. And I can make the pass through to eliminate the zoning districts and eliminate any reference to this limited to residential districts. Get that back out.
And you talked about rentals, um, what about uh, single-family home rentals?
Still has.
Yeah, that's not currently addressed directly, Kevin, that, let me see about.
No, no, um, section four C, number two, rented single-family property with written permission from the property owner.
Yeah, I do stand corrected. That, that is addressed where if it's a single-family home that's rent, rented, the owner of the home still does need to approve in writing the, the application for the permit.
Okay.
All right. So trustees, you still have a shot to email any other questions or concerns, but otherwise we're going to move forward. But otherwise, we're going to move forward with these modifications. We'll make the further modification we discussed and next month, we're back on to discussing chickens. Bobby gets to make comments about the chicken ball again. All right. Thank you, guys. I'm going to move on to the next item. I might go back to sharing the PowerPoints. All right, we've already done the CDBG grant, so those are both complete. Sewer project, we have discussion regarding the change order number five. This is in reference to contracts to the sewer project with J squared. This is something that Neil has gone through and talked through with Rich from MRB. And both Neil and I are good with this. Neil, is there anything you want to add? Or trustees, are there any questions you have about this change order? This is actually a change order that brings us, I think, a lot of money back because it's work that wasn't done related to the original design. Let's go. All right. Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign change order number five.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Craig. Any further discussion? All in favor? I?
I.
I.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, passes. Thank you very much. In terms of the village election, I have a resolution that I want to review. Bring this up here. Okay, this is the resolution stating that the election will be held on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. The election will be held at the Anport Municipal Building from noon to 9:00 PM. Be resolved, the Village Board of Husick Falls does. Here I designate Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, as the day of the village election. And be it further resolved that this election will be held at the Anport Municipal Building from noon until 9:00 PM. I need someone to offer this resolution and second.
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Emily.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Any other discussion on this? All right, roll call, open rate, please.
Trustee Pine.
Yes.
Trustee O'Valley.
Yes.
Trustee Alter, trustee Mark.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys. Missed up the share, switch to the other screen. Okay. And I'm looking for a motion. We previously put out a legal notice regarding the available seats. But with the trustee stepping down and the new information we have on the seats, I'm looking for a motion to amend the legal notice regarding available seats in the March 21 election to be five total seats, one mayor and four trustees, noting that three trustee seats are for two-year terms and one trustee seat is for a one-year term. Looking for a so moved from someone?
So moved.
Looking for a chorus of so moved, where he can pick the first and I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. All right, all in favor? I?
I.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay. So additional last minute items, I don't know why the thing is appearing out of order. That was kind of a fun thing. We already discussed the waste hauler thing. There is a situation that came up that Denise just emailed us about earlier today that unfortunately, I think is something that we have to discuss tonight. Andy, did you get this email?
I did not. I don't think I did.
Well, I need to fix that. I'm sending this to you right now. On one of my thousands of screens set up here. It's related to health insurance renewal for our employees. The renewal date is February 1st. It should be considered on the board to offer additional health insurance plan in light of some significant changes to our current MVP plan, also done by CD P H P. Trustees, did you guys get to read this email?
I did.
Yeah, I did.
What were your thoughts? The basic gist is we have employees who are on insurance. We offer one plan. If we want to offer an additional plan, we would need to make this decision now so we can apply for it in time. Marie, do I have that right?
The one policy, I believe, is the Blue Cross, you have to decide by the end of the week. The other one, you're okay till the first February, but the Blue Cross requires that at least one person, if they're interested in that, it has to be taken care of by Friday.
Andy, did you get to warp back in time and review the email I just sent to you a minute ago?
Well, of course not. You think I did that on my screen? No. Just a couple of general thoughts, though.
Yeah, please.
When he just said that on the Blue Cross product, that it has to be decided by the end of the week, do any of these carriers require a minimum number of participants in order to provide it?
The Blue Cross one is the way I understood from Denise today was at least one person would have to sign up.
Okay. So the decision on that one would be if the village is proposing to offer that as an available insurance, health insurance policy for employees, doesn't require anyone to sign up. It's just the determination of whether to offer that. I'm going to presume that everyone has looked at the relative costs of these in terms of any premium changes that the village, that does the, I don't know this, but does the village pay any portion of the health insurance premium for employees?
I think the other thing, too, that they had to be careful of is whether those providers do out of state. So I know some of them don't go, don't honor some Vermont doctors. So I think they should find that out too before they change plans.
Right. But as I understand it, the issue tonight would be to authorize that these products be made available as an option for your employees, right? The CD P H P and Blue Cross?
Yeah, that's that's the question. So I guess trustees, the question is, and then the question for Andy is, does this require a board motion? Or is this something I can decide after hearing from the trustees? It sounds like we need to decide if we want to offer the Blue Shield. And if the board wants to do that, then we would have to get that information out to the employees affected to make their decision. So we would know if we would have one person signing on to hit the minimum one. Is that right, Marie? The way I understand it?
Yes, Rob, that's how I understood it.
Yeah, I guess, you know, this is kind of last minute and I'm not a health insurance expert, so I don't have intelligent questions really about whether this is a good idea or bad. Does, is there a discount rate to insurance if you get a certain number of people to sign up? So if we dilute that number and we drop below 10, do we, do the premiums go up for other people?
No, unfortunately not.
She did state in the email that it would save $1,600 for the village a year. So I'm curious to know, yeah, I'm curious to know, like, what the changes would be and deductible and what whatnot. I mean, I would think the employees who you're going to offer it to would like to see it as well, because how are you going to get someone to sign up for it if they don't know what they're signing up for?
Right. And the situation we are deciding is, do we want to offer this? And then if we, if we do, which I I do, I want to take care of our employees. That's something I want our, our board and our leadership to be, you know, known for. I want to pride in. Then we would have to get the information out to them, but I think we could do that in the next day or two.
Right. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't know enough to know whether we're taking care of our employees or offering them a really crappy health plan and trying to save them money that's going to cost them money in the long run. All I can do is trust Denise, which I do. And she is proposing this is a good idea. I'm not going to learn about the issue in the next 20 minutes to become a healthcare expert. So I'm willing to trust her that this is a good idea coming from Denise. And if she thinks it's a good idea and she has put thought into it, then I trust that. I don't think any of us are going to become health insurance experts, you know, in time to make and to decide whether we're doing something good or bad to our employees. But we're offering them an extra choice and it's their job to be responsible and decide whether it's the right choice for them or not.
So Andy, do we need to make a board decision on this?
In my opinion, it would, because if it affects any budget issues, if Denise has said it potentially saves money for the village, it should be reviewed and enacted upon by the village's whole, mere motion would be okay.
Just so I can cut in there too, if you understand, both Denise, our Denise and Denise, the broker, are available to discuss it with the employees that are affected and go through the two policies before the decisions are made. So just so everybody's aware that they're more than willing to do all that in the next couple of days.
All right, I would be willing to and eager to accept a motion to offer the Blue Shield Plan additionally this year.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion?
I just wish we had more time to consider it, but I know time is of the essence.
Yeah, I agree.
Sadly, they just got that information to Denise today.
Which is, yeah, why all of a sudden came up today.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's kind of funny because I have MVP and I haven't gotten a notification of any price changes or plan changes, so.
I'm in the same boat on my other job, so I'll be finding out. All right, so we have the motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? I?
I.
I.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Trustees, is there any other business you want to bring to the board? Oh, that's old. Sorry about that. No one saw that. All right, hearing none. In a moment, we're going to enter a private session, kind of similar to executive session, but a little bit different procedure to seek legal advice from counsel on a pending issue of municipal landfill. There will, this will be a private, on a separate Zoom meeting, and there will be no additional business conducted after the end of the private session. So in a sense, this is the end of the meeting. So trustees, unless you have something else you want to bring up, I am looking to have a motion to enter private session to seek legal advice.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
I.
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 Opposed? Okay, carries trustees, give me a few minutes to get the other meetings set up. Otherwise, we are all set. So thank you, guys, very much. Trustees, you can actually hop off of this one and just give me a minute or two to get the other one started off.
So we log off of this one and then log into the next one?
Yes, just wait about two minutes for me to get the other one set up. Right, Andy?
Okey doke. Good night, all.
Oh, that's correct.
Good night, Marie.
Good night, Marie.
Marie, good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, anybody else connected.
Hey, Rob.
Yeah.
Doug with the Eastwick. I just want to say something to Marie real quick.
Sure.
Before you cut off. Marie, on that notice that you're going to have to put out, do you need that in this week's paper or is next week's paper sufficient? I just want to reserve room for you if you do.
Marie still on?
Yes, Andy, is next week okay?
Next week is fine. I have no problem with that.
Andy, this is the one for the CDBG grant. I think next week is fine too, but I honestly can't remember.
Oh, I, it would be my understanding next week is fine because the public hearing won't be in your February meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to reserve room for you if you needed it this week. That's great. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Bye.
Take care.